Call this meeting to order. All board members are present. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up is the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Lisa, second by Lynn. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Comments and requests from visitors? I don't see any visitors. So, other than folks that are on the agenda, so. Consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I will make a motion unless you want to pull it out.
Yeah, let's pull it out.
Okay.
What do you want to pull out?
Can we just pull out? It's just a little technical thing on the paraprofessional handbook.
Okay, perfect. And then, I actually wanted to pull, I just have a quick question on the EL coordinator role. So, I'm, then I'll move to approve the consent agenda by pulling the paraprofessional handbook and the EL coordinator.
Second.
Ball. Motion by Kara, second by Lisa. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The amended consent agenda is approved. So, we'll start with the paraprofessional. We'll just add that in right now. Paraprofessional handbook.
Just kind of a point of reference, our two new principals aren't listed on the contact on, I'm sorry, I'm not on that page quite yet.
Page thirty-four.
Thank you.
I had the same thing. In fact, the community ed director name wasn't in there too.
Okay.
So.
Page thirty-four, you said?
Page thirty-four, four of the.
Yeah. So, just to make sure that those things get included before.
It's released, yeah.
Yeah, just so everyone has an information.
Do you, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I had a couple other things. It was like, I think page six it said building maps, but there wasn't any maps.
Okay.
So, I didn't know if that was supposed to. And then, I think like on page thirty-nine, it said Board of Education, and I didn't know if we're trying to change everything to the Recore School Board.
Oh, right.
And then, there was just a few other things, just, I didn't know, like that physical therapist that wasn't capitalized, just.
Okay, small.
Small, little grammatical things. Punctuation, all stuff.
Okay.
Spacing.
What? What, what's the preferred way to proceed, Scott? Is this something that needs approval? I'm assuming before school start date would be ideal?
Yeah, the overall picture is that paraprofessional, you're asking for your endorsement of the handbook, or can, they're not asking you to adopt it specifically.
Okay, okay.
Asking you to endorse it.
For your doorstep, okay.
So, changes can be made at any time in reality.
Okay, perfect. So, I have, I took some notes on some of the comments, and then if you have specific, you know, small grammar comments, I don't know if you wanted to send a list or.
Sure, whatever.
I think if we're gonna make the, make a few changes, we may as well make them. But, so would you like us to do a motion to approve or endorse the, endorse the document? I think we can endorse it with.
Yeah, because it's not content, it's just.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, right. Okay. So, is there a motion to endorse the paraprofessional handbook?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Lisa, second by Sunny. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I just had a quick question on the EL coordinator position. I was curious if that's something where the job description would change, and if that's something that would need to be updated. I didn't know if it's.
Yeah, we're asking Gwen to review the job description. There's a very base one, but it's probably not very current.
Okay.
There are some, there are some programmatic things that she would like to include in there. So, Gwen and I have had conversation about the adjusting the job description based on what the.
All the funds for that are coming through QCOM?
Through QCOM.
Okay.
So, we're just, we're approving just a change from?
Yeah, you're actually authorizing the payment to Gwen as, as the coordinator.
Okay, okay. So, the job description for the EL, was it, would be an EL teacher then?
EL coordinator.
Okay. Okay, so there is an EL coordinator job description?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if that was a new position for us at Recore, or if that was.
Part of the, part of the reason that it needs to be adjusted is scope of time and past practice with the experience. When it was first put into place, there were only two teachers at the time, and it wasn't a duty assigned essentially as a coach beyond day. It was within this, within the assignment of the teacher. Now that we have four people in the role, and this, the expectation is that it would be above and beyond the regular student day. So, there are some things that need to tweak in there. Overall, the concepts within it are very similar, but there are some tweaks that Gwen and I have talked about that we were talking about.
Okay. So, then is there a motion to approve the, let me scroll to it. Is it just this?
What page is that?
Three.
It was really just in the description.
I don't think there was something with it.
Yep, three, or, it's consent item, so five D, and it's the third paragraph down. So, so then, so then, I guess I move to approve the additional assignment as EL coordinator for the district. And the, I guess approving the stipend from QCOM for Gwen Anderson.
Second.
Motion by Kara, second by Lynn. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And then, just a question I should have asked earlier. It said that there would be a recommendation for head cook, but there wasn't anything in the update?
Yes, that's been a very interesting conversation throughout the day. It has been offered and not accepted, and so we are actually planning to go back to the board and re-post the position. So, we were expecting that it would be offered and accepted, but it was not accepted.
And that was a current complaint, or some of this that was going?
It was, it was not a current.
Oh, it's not at all. That's something that applied?
Yes, and the other, the other piece that made that very challenging is it was the same person that was offered the Recore Kid Care Lead Site Lead Position. So, that person was choosing between two roles in the district. They had actually accepted the lead, the site leading kid care, but the interview for head cook came after that, and they wanted to continue in the interview for the head cook position. When both were actually offered, she chose the site lead in that kid care instead. So, it's been actually very interesting conversations throughout the day, and that decision came very late because after it was actually finalized by an about quarter to five. So, we will bring back the Recore Kid Care Site Lead. We just didn't get into the packet because of the time.
All right, okay. So, moving on to action items, it looks like action items A and B for checks to BSN and Cold Spring Bakery are, there's nothing to approve there? Is that correct?
No, there are.
Oh, there are?
Yeah.
Okay.
Didn't get into that data, it looks like. So, I move to approve check number nine-six-one-six-six to Cold Spring Bakery in the amount of one hundred dollars and eighteen, or one hundred eighteen dollars and forty-eight cents.
Second. Motion by Jason, second by Lisa. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And Lynn upstands. Motion carries.
Okay. I move to approve check number nine-six-zero-eight-six, nine-six-one-zero-nine, and nine-six-one-five-nine for total amount of eighteen thousand, two hundred ninety-nine dollars and thirty cents to BSN Sports.
Motion by Jason.
Second.
Second by Lynn. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
She ended up stands. Motion carries. And then, let's see. Action item C, addition of paraprofessional positions. Mr. Getter, Assistant Principal at the Secondary Schools, has submitted a request for two additional paraprofessional positions in the Special Ed Department to meet requirements of a IEP. Are there any questions, or Scott, I don't know if you have any additional information?
Neat is here, but essentially, we need to, or professional positions.
Are these students new to the district?
Ah, they're new. You know, with the whole mix, this is six-twelve. Some are probably new to the district. Some are, some are existing. So, it's kind of a combination. Yeah, there is. Ten minutes, I just had a special education, but there are a lot of, many of those.
There's a lot of movement from the elementary schools into the middle school, and the growth of the sixth grade is part of that.
Make a motion to approve that.
Second. Motion by Lynn, second by Sunny. Any further discussion? I actually have one more quick question. Just with the budget, I mean, I know this is just approving the position, but I'm, I'm fairly certain that we have room in the budget for this. I just, not that that probably affects our decision to be able to do it anyway, but.
Yes, because of increasing the students, but also because, you know, there's.
It's covered at, partially. Sure, perfect, okay. All right. So, motion by Lynn, second by Sunny. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Action item D, student handbooks. Mr. Getter and Mr. Nelson have submitted the student handbooks and are here to present some changes that we've made to the student handbooks at the secondary level. We're looking to approve, or actually, it looks like endorse. Endorse the handbooks. So, did you?
Sure.
Come on up. Thanks for being here.
Yeah. First, I want to apologize. I was just rereading the cover letter and noticed I didn't update some of the dates from last year's.
Great. You're human, oh my goodness.
The, there are very few changes or updates to the middle school handbook this year. Some of them are more grammatical and just language changes, but some of the, I guess, more major of the minor changes that were made have been highlighted on the cover letter. Page seven, for example, with the tardies, really going through and making changes to identifying when the students are, accumulate so many tardies, then they are issued detention. If they don't get that detention made up within a certain time period, then it turns into an school suspension. So, instead of having a drag and drag and drag, it's, we're putting some timeframes around that. Page ten of the handbook with the electronic devices. It is really more so for the locker room. It does say no phones allowed, electronic devices allowed in the locker room. Now, we know that's, they have them with them all the time wherever they go, so we know they're in there. So, it's really more specifying, clarifying the language in there that they are not to be used or turned on while in the locker room. So, just to give some clarity around that. Page eleven with the lunch breakfast, just reiterating again that we have the free breakfast for all of our students, and we are adding a second chance breakfast for the middle school this year. So, just putting that information in there. So, that'll be done after first hour, we get to second hour, so we're expanding the passing time there a little bit to allow for that. Page fifteen with the visitors. We've had a few instances this past year where we had some parents just show up and say, I want to visit my kids' classrooms for the day, which we allow parents to come in and visit, but we're just adding a section in there that we encourage parents to come in, communicate, be part, you know, participate in their students' day, but we would like to have some advanced notice. And just have that set up ahead of time, so that adults can show up and wanting to do that. Page eighteen with the arguing. We've had a number of incidents the last couple of years of students just arguing to argue. There's really not a section in the discipline act section that really fits that, so I'm just adding another section in there to better fit that behavior and description. Pages twenty and twenty-one in the behaviors, there's a couple changes in there, and of course, I didn't print it in color. The lying, false reporting, just updating the consequences on there, actually reducing the consequences from a suspension more to detention on the first initial incident. Page twenty-one with the theft, increasing that consequence from a detention to a suspension. So, there's one that's kind of refusing consequence, one increasing the consequence. And then, on pages twenty-three and twenty-four, this is new state statute that we have to provide parents information about opting out of state testing. I believe it is new this year with some of the state requirements in going under the SF instead of the other program that we were under. So, we have to provide parents the opportunity to opt out of statewide testing. So, that has to be put in the student handbook, and it has to be put on our school website. It's been added to both the middle school and high school websites already, and then we're just adding it to our handbook to comply with state statute. Main updates for the handbook.
I had a couple of questions. So, the visitors part, I didn't know if with this new entry system, if this was, I mean, are people still gonna have to be signing in even if you're like carding in?
Oh, yeah, this is, this is for parents that actually want to come and stay for the entire day with their kid.
Yeah.
Go to classrooms.
Yeah, I get that part, but there's like a paragraph above it that just says you're supposed to sign in, blah, blah, blah. And I just didn't know that piece says must sign in main office, receive a visitor's badge. So, I just didn't know with this new setup if that's gonna be accurate to what it is, or is it gonna be something different, so.
And Scott, maybe you can attest better to the, I'm not, I know we're getting a new system, a new system. How it's going to work, how it's gonna look, I can't speak to that. They're still gonna be, either through that system or through the iPad, which they're currently doing, they're gonna be signing in still, they're gonna be getting a name badge.
Okay.
So, they're still gonna be signing in and getting a badge that they have to have on them while they're here.
Okay.
There's, there's nothing in that paragraph before that specifically will change with the.
I just didn't know if things were, where that was at the process, so.
Who's testing that again? I mean, who's, who's got that going at the beginning of the year?
Secondary will be first.
Okay. So, it will, they will be using it if they come to the middle school.
Signing in could mean any form, whatever that looks like.
And then, I think I had a question about page twelve, which is page one of four. They had about this, the lunch breakfast. I just didn't know if this was following the policy. I just, it says full payment on the first and third Monday, split payment. I didn't know if that's different than what we're doing, or, because we're just, we're talking about the meal policy right now.
Oh, okay.
And so, that's why it sort of popped out at me. And so, I didn't know if, if you're doing something different?
No, and this is just, I think, what's been past practice.
Okay.
So, when you're updating your policy?
Yeah.
Then that'll be updated in here, to whatever the district policy is going to be.
Okay. So.
And I don't know that the district policy is specific as, it just says you can't go.
This is like the procedure?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's just what the kitchen, I think it's just what the kitchen prefers.
Negative.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we were driving of that. And then, page five ninety-seven, I think, there was, I had a question about, because it talked about excused absence, unexcused absence.
Hey, what page of the handbook are you?
Page five.
Oh, page five?
Yeah, page five or ninety-seven for.
The board book.
Board book, sorry. So, the pre-planned absences, I guess I just am wondering about that, if it needs to be more specific, because my daughter had the, had her out of school a day, and it ended up being an excused absence for a trip or whatever, and I know that there's some gray in determining that, but I didn't know if that should be explicitly said, or is there some pre-planned absences that are trips that can be excused absences, or?
What?
Because it doesn't really say in there.
Vague.
Yeah.
And, and it's kind of intentionally vague.
Okay.
Just to allow for some flexibility in there.
Yeah.
But if a family, I guess it's preferred if a family or a student knows that they're going to be gone in advance to let the office and the school know that they're going to be gone, so that they can get all the paperwork ahead of time.
Right.
And go to the teachers, get the, get the forms filled out, and so they can get the work ahead of time if it's available for them.
Right. I just didn't want people to be surprised, you know, that it's unexcused, you know, if they were expecting it because they approved it, that it's excused, and I don't know what the best answer is to that, but.
Yeah, so explain that to me. I'm new to this. So, if a parent, if a parent calls or whatever, notifies the office of a planned vacation, that's not necessarily excused? Is that what you're saying?
Right.
So, what makes it excused, what makes it not excused?
So, explain. So, you were given an unexcused absence?
Yeah, my daughter was, so that's why I was just reading that a little bit more clearly, so. It's not a big deal. I don't want to have a.
If you're calling in in advance.
But I just want a clarity for the rest of the people who have that.
I mean, if you're calling in in advance saying my daughter's gonna be gone.
And I don't know, I can't see if I did that or not. I don't recall that.
I guess I can't think of a situation to where it would not be excused.
Okay, that's my question.
So, the key to that is you have to do it ahead of time, and then it's excused versus if you do it after the fact?
If you are, if you're gone without notifying the school, then that, we automatically mark that as unexcused because we haven't been notified.
Okay.
But once we get the notification as far as the reason behind the absence, then we can change that to excuse.
Yeah.
So, if you know ahead of time that you're gonna be gone, notify the school, it gets marked in as an excuse, as an excuse absence.
Okay. And I can't speak, because this has been a while ago.
Sure.
But I just know that I had an experience with that, so.
Yeah, so I guess the main part is if you are gone and the school isn't notified, then that is marked as unexcused because we don't have any knowledge of why the student is gone.
Okay.
Does that help? Clarify?
Sure, sure, yeah.
It does, it does.
And then, I just didn't know, there was like the included, like the, the four policies, the bullying, harassment, and hazing, and weapons, and I didn't know for efficiency. Because I mean, there's internet usage and the meal policy. I mean, should we just say this is where you get the policies, or is there a specific reason why those have to be included?
Those four have to be included in the student handbook.
Okay.
I don't know what statute it is, but I, it's those four main policies that have to be in a handbook.
All right. So, I was just, it was confusing as why some were there and some weren't.
That's because some are, you have to have the full policy in the handbook.
Okay. Thanks. That's it for me.
All right. Other questions?
All right, is there a motion to endorse the handbook? Make that motion. Okay, yes, thank you. Let me scroll to the right. Sorry, I'm having some computer stuff. Let's see. All right. So, is there a motion to approve the, or endorse the? Are we gonna go through the?
The high school one?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I see, I see what you're saying. Okay, so, thank you. Sorry.
God, so close. You were so close.
I am sorry. I see what you're saying. I apologize.
All right, I kind of did the same thing that Jake did there with outlining the changes, not a lot of changes as well in the high school handbook. Starts off with on page two, the mission statement, he's updating it to make a difference today, to create a better tomorrow from the old one, to be central Minnesota's public education standard. Also, then I have, also have a mistake, I think, on the, the one that I sent you. I took out where it said the Spartan history, it talked about the old, the Recore Middle School. That's now the district education facility. And then, in two thousand eleven, twelve is when I, is when this site opened for the graduation class in two thousand twelve, so like it says twelve thirteen in what I sent you, so those dates are not accurate. Page three, I updated the student, updated the student senate for this coming year, freshman through senior. Page five, tardies to school and class. The red part there that was added, each additional tardy during the term result in or detention. That is not new. That's always been our policy after three, students can art detention. What is different is all detention must be served before the conclusion of the term, or remaining tardies become unexcused absences. Failure to complete this term resulted in grade reduction because that is what happens with unexcused absence. The reason we're doing this is with both our credit recovery, actually, it's more so just our detention. Kids will wait until the last month of school to serve their detention, and it becomes overwhelming for our detention location. So, we're gonna try and take care of them along the way. And that will also come with notification from the, to the parents as they reach that, I don't know, they reach their third tardy for the term. That resets every six weeks. So, a student can be tardy twelve times to each class per year and still never receive any consequence. Classes or club meetings?
I wish I could do that at work.
Well, they're either tardy zero or fifty. There's no in-between really. All clubs must be approved through the activities office. That's just if we're gonna start like a couple years ago, kids, it was great, they started a STEM club. But no one knew what it was until posters were hung up in the school. They said, hey, who's, who's in charge of this, who's running, so you gotta make sure they advise you, it's there all the time. Page eight, dances. Only for our high school students and their registered guests can attend. We added, we don't allow students that are out of high school age to attend our regular dances. They can obviously come to prom, but our, but our homecoming dance and our, and our snow dance, we do not allow kids that are out of high school to come to those dances. Breakfast, page ten, all students receive one free breakfast each day. They can receive it before school or during the second chance breakfast. Down in the parking lot, and also on page ten, we took out the part that says, students can park, cannot park on the west side of the school building. The city of Cold Spring also enforces no parking on County Route Fifty. About however many years ago when they redid County Route Fifty, they now have parking on those sides, so the kids can park there, unless there's more than two inches of snow, so they don't force that, so students are allowed to park over there. In the past, they were not allowed to. And one new thing that we added there on, on page ten also is we put, students are not allowed to display flags or banners from vehicles parked in the Recore High School parking lot that became an issue throughout the year last year. And it's still a trend out there, because you see vehicles driving around with flags hanging all over every day, so hopefully that can eliminate any more issues that would arise from that.
What are you going to do?
Ah, well, start like, I don't know exactly. I'd have to double check. but it's going to start with a, with a basically a warning and conversation to the point where they could lose their parking permit privileges.
Is that going to be like American flag? I mean, I see people like...
That would be American flags, Confederate flags.
And they're going to be a...
I don't know. Even like the thing not, that it would just go away, but...
Open for discussion.
I don't know, I don't know what the, I don't know. If someone were to push it, I don't, is there, does anybody know or have experience with what they can and can't do? Or what they could force?
You mean if they tried to turn it into a free speech issue?
Yeah.
It's American flag, I'm living in America, I want...
Park on County Road fifty.
Because I mean, that's what I see nationally.
Well, right, I know, I know.
You can have your American flag, but you...
You just can't go with the park.
Yeah.
And I'm going to be one hundred percent honest, if somebody really, really wanted to push it, I don't know if our, how much our policy would hold. I say as long as you have a policy, you're okay with that.
Right.
But things get pushed to the extent, I don't know what would happen out of that. And we had a number of instances last year where students came with Confederate flags. And you know, if students have caused a disruption in school, that's when it becomes an issue.
Right.
I hope it doesn't get to that point. But I'll be honest, when we have Confederate flags out there in the parking lot, if it's every day, that's going to be a hot topic between the kids in school.
No, I get it, but I just didn't know what the other end of the perspective would result in.
You, I mean, we have policies saying you can't wear certain types of T-shirts and stuff like that. It's a similar situation, it's a free speech thing, but it's also our policy is saying we're not. And those hold up?
Yeah, and we don't have, you know, most of our clothing items that are probably just sexually inappropriate. You know, that's kind of the extent of what those are. Or alcohol, so that's a good one.
I know we heard about it when we had the chamber showcase. There are some residents of the streets, not County Road fifty, but
The side ones.
the side streets that have complained about students parking, that they can't walk along the road or it's not safe to walk along the road.
That street, is that what that is?
Yeah, there's no sidewalk there.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's anything we can do to make it easier on some of the residents there.
There are a lot of students that park though, I think it's, I'm not quite sure. But on the parking lot, the person to the right, there's a side street and then, and then it must be sixth street. So there are students that park on those, more on field.
And that's purely because they want to pay for the permit? We have space, correct, in our parking lot?
I believe we should have space.
I mean, it's not like we've run out of space in there. And it's what...
So some days...
Fifty bucks, or how much is it to park?
Fifty dollars a year.
Fifty dollars a year?
Yeah.
Do you find a lot more of the students that maybe don't have their license the entire year that are...
Then it's prorated, I think it's twenty-five dollars.
Oh, it is.
Per trimester, it's not quite cut in half. So, so yeah, because some students will wait until they get their license, because they start driving. So yeah, it's, I think it might be by trimester, I believe it's twenty-five dollars.
Okay.
Or fifty dollars for the year.
For the year or twenty-five, it's kind of prorated a little bit, so that's not...
So, yeah, that seems reasonable. So is it like kids that have like multiple cars? Or they have, they take one parent's car and they don't have the permit? And they don't want to have to worry about...
I think it's mostly kids that don't want to pay fifty dollars.
So, they usually can work around that if they have multiple...
Because if kids just forget, then they still park, okay, and they'll come and tell, say, if I brought a different car. You know, they'll tell them, so that's really not a big deal or...
Because I mean, I, when I bring my kids to school, I come that way. I mean, surprising none of them got hit, because of course they're not, I mean, not only are they parking there, they're not paying attention to anything that they're doing. So it's surprising to me, and there's been a few vendor vendors that I've seen after school where the cops will be hanging out there because a kid has run into another vehicle trying to move and so...
And I think it gets hard sometimes too on County Road fifty with how close the cars park to the crosswalk. It's hard to see kids in, coming, entering the crosswalk as a driver. So that gets hard sometimes too. Did we, I think we made, we have some sort of an agreement reached with the city for the snow days? And giving the school and like a heads up that they're going to be ticketing cars after that happened last year.
We did have that last year, I'm going to address it on the first day of school when I talk to all the kids. And that's kind of a tough thing to, you know, we're going to let them know, hey, you can't park up there if it's going to snow. But you know, if there's thirty cars parked out there, I'm going to have a tough time, and thirty kids just leave at ten o'clock because it looks like two inches of snow. You know, so we're going to continue to give them the reminders on that. And it's all of them out there, you know, it'll be one, one...
Yeah, and for some reason I thought when that came up last year that somebody had talked with somebody at the city, and the city said that they'd give, they'd at least give the school notice that, or wait until school was out or something.
They had ticketed too.
Yeah.
Is it, I mean, so it's not really a hardship probably? These are just kids that say, you know what, I'm going to, I'm just going to save my fifty bucks.
I can't save for sure.
So it would be nice to make them all safe and just get them in the parking lot because it would certainly make it better, but I don't know how you could possibly do it. Good luck with that.
I'll let you know when the boys park up there.
Conversation with the city is also that they are public streets. And everybody can park on a public street.
Right.
Continue down there on page twelve, we just changed. Jen Sable is no longer with us as a guidance counselor, so Michelle Collison, we've put her in there for the contact. The next one is like Jake had talked about, the state statute for the statewide testing. And then on the last page, we've adjusted our high school schedule, nine through twelve starts five minutes early now. This year they'll be starting at eight-ten instead of eight-fifteen. For our regular start, start time.
Was there a reason for the change? Just to fit in?
I'm going to throw it this way, but it's for our teachers that travel between the high school and the middle school. Therefore, they can teach a first hour at the high school and a second hour at the middle school.
Okay.
We have seven mid-periods in middle school, that's fifty-nine. So therefore, a teacher that taught first hour of high school could not go teach a second hour and there's an odd gap in there for, for the prep time.
Yeah, but mainly for the middle school teachers that taught a high school class.
Okay.
If they taught a first hour high school class in the old schedule, then they would come back for the middle school second hour, couldn't teach a second hour class because it had already started. But then they also weren't getting their full prep period if they're a middle school teacher because of that overlapping time. So by making that five-minute adjustment where we, high school started five minutes earlier, and then that five-minute is being rolled back into the second chance breakfast, so it's extending that second chance breakfast. Middle school added a second chance breakfast in there to kind of open, or get, put a gap in that between the first and second hour time period. So now a middle school teacher can teach a full first hour of high school class, have time to get back and either teach a second hour of middle school class or have a full prep period during second hour. So that eliminated that discrepancy.
Perfect.
And at the last, we only had a second chance breakfast for the high school.
High school, yeah. And so that falls within the contract language?
Yeah.
But we didn't, okay.
Good creative problem solving, I like that.
Anything else or any more questions? All right, is there a motion to endorse the high school, middle school handbooks?
I'll make that motion.
By Lisa?
I'll say it.
Second by Shannon. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the handbooks are endorsed. So the motion carries. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I like how you both laid it out on that cover letter, so we could see what changed. It's just really nice reading through the packet that way, thank you.
All right. Moving on to discussion items. So we have second readings for just two policies. Policy eight fourteen, adding extracurricular activities, and policy six-three, certified staff evaluation. Were there any comments or questions for those policies? I know I didn't have any questions with those. And then, so if there's no questions, then moving it to the consent agenda for a third reading? For next time, is that, is everybody comfortable with that? Okay. And then, we are on a first reading for policy six-five, family leave policy. Policy six-six, public and private personnel data. Policy six-seven, employee drug and alcohol policy. Policy six-eight, equal opportunity, equal employment opportunity. And then policy six-ten, leave of absences. Were there any questions or comments with, oh, nope, and then I missed a couple. Okay, policy six-twelve, prayer at teacher workshops. And policy six-thirteen, workload policies for special education teachers. Were there any questions or comments with those policies?
I would just say if you have concerns, let us know, because we'll be working on it. Just email us, and we can bring those suggestions or changes forward as we're reviewing them, so...
With policy six-six, I thought we had a discussion on that previously, but you guys hadn't probably reviewed it in policy committee yet, is that...
Six-six is which one?
Public and private personnel data? I don't remember talking about that one.
Okay, okay. And then policy six-thirteen is, just with that one, when I was reading it, I was kind of like, I felt a little bit out of touch with recommending it, and I just wanted to make sure that we recommend, that the appropriate parties would also have a chance to review that. Just because it's more of a spec, like a specific policy. But that was my only, my only...
I guess what we were doing with the leave in the contract, does that fit in here on the leave policy?
Yeah, we'll have...
There's a request in negotiations to incorporate this in the master agreement, something more specific given than six-thirteen. The, the challenge in particular with the request of having folks that are more closely related to the workload is that they will ask us to be much more precise and much more specific. And there are very detailed things that the staff members would want us to put in. The policy that we have is MSBA's recommended policy. There's going to be a natural tension just in terms of what the special education teachers would expect and what we really are required to do in terms of the policy. We can certainly gather the feedback, I'm not saying that we should. There's going to be a natural tension.
Okay. So is that, are we talking, we're still talking about...
Six-thirteen.
Okay, oh, okay, okay, I see. Okay, so it's more probably legal language than it is?
It's more a difference in expectations of what the workload should be or what the workload can be.
Sure, okay. I see, that makes sense, yeah, okay. With, if, if we're talking about family, is it family leave policy was going through negotiations or...
Well, that's awesome.
Yeah, there's a whole bunch of them are going through negotiations. So I think as we, as the policy committee reviews policies, we're going to have to keep in mind what we've agreed to in the negotiation, so that they're consistent.
Sure, so these might not necessarily move to second reading next time, is that...
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Most of the, yeah, most of the language has been agreed upon, but nothing's final until negotiations are completed. So it's, we think we know where it's going, but...
Okay, so basically some of these policies are going to go away for a little bit until the contracts are settled?
Yeah.
Okay. So, or be tabled? Okay, perfect. All right. Any more questions or comments with policies?
Only, I would be that as we were reviewing policy six-six in committee, there really are not any structural changes to the policy. MSBA is recommending, their only change was in a for-reference document that we don't typically know. So on the first reading of policy six-six, it could also be our final reading because there are no substantive changes to the policy.
Okay.
So in the recommendation part, in the last, very last paragraph, it just says six-five should be a first reading and then return for a second. And for six-six could put in, should be a first reading, but authorized as a policy because there are no substantive changes to it. Six-seven, we would replace with the MSBA model policy. So we take all ours and replace it with the MSBA model. Six-eight was a first reading, also to return for a second and third reading. And then six-ten, twelve, and thirteen, because our first time reading for everybody, the recommendation is to refer those back to the committee.
Okay. So basically, if I'm understanding this correctly, policy six-seven, or, or six-six would go, be approved tonight then?
Yes.
Is that the only one, or?
Yes.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve six-six, policy six-six?
I'll make a motion to approve policy six-seven.
Motion by Sunny?
Second.
Second by Jason, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, thanks for that clarification. Um, okay. Moving on to discussion item C, the superintendent evaluation process. So this is a standard discussion, a yearly discussion that we will have. And it's part, it's, it's a part of the superintendent evaluation process that is recommended by MSBA. And that's that we review the process, and it's especially important this year as it's the first time we've, you know, we made some, you know, substance, substantive changes to the process with both the format as well as the process. So I think it's important that we go through the process and make sure that some changes that people identified are made. And I have a few small changes, but in general...
I have one that, so on the second page of the timeline, I'm going to find where it is, between second meeting in April and second meeting in May, it says each school board member completes the summit of evaluation form, taking three sixty survey results into consideration. So we did that this year, but I think what was hard for me is that when we had the summarized responses, Scott's own evaluation was included in the, the summary, and that was confusing to me.
Okay.
So to me, it makes more sense to have his own evaluation, but to have that separate from all of the board responses.
Sure. That makes sense. And this part of, you know, the feedback from this conversation as well, we'll go to subcommittee
Yeah.
for probably one last subcommittee meeting. But I'll take notes and we can discuss that in more detail, but I think that makes sense to me. Were there any, was there any other feedback that folks had from the process? Or the timeline, or how clarity of the process? My, my thoughts are probably stuff that would happen on my end, but I think it would be helpful to have a clear, clear, to be clear with the purpose and the use of the data, especially if we're doing a three sixty. So just kind of explaining the process a little bit better. And so they understand how the data is being used and where it's going. So if I had any questions from regarding the three sixty, that was, it was around, well, what exactly is this for? And how is this data being used and that kind of stuff? So... I was reticent to be. To be too, you know, to give too much information, but I think maybe a little bit more is warranted. The other piece. One of the issues that we had with our former process, I felt, was that. When we were basing the evaluation on core, or now it's core competencies, but before it was on job description, it was a lot of collating of skills. And it got a little bit confusing and I, we still have that format a little bit with the core competencies, but I think. As we discussed in subcommittee, the intent is to have the core competency listed with some bullet points of things to be thinking about. When you're thinking about that core competency, it's kind of stuff to just kind of ponder, not that you're necessarily evaluating each of those pieces. And so maybe some clarity in the definition of the process at the beginning. Would be helpful to both board members or employees. And again, it's a small detail, but I think it's a subtle difference that kind of does make a big difference too, so. I don't know how you guys feel about that.
Then it does give you a little more direction because what somebody might think isn't really fed under that category. You give those little bit of examples that can guide persons' directions. What am I really commenting on for this versus, you know, you know, a little bit of a hodgepodge because. You know, black means something to, you know, somebody else, you know, this color versus that color, you know, black is black.
No, I, I agree, I think it's important to have those. Those points there for people to be thinking about, but to somehow make sure that they understand that, that those aren't the only, I mean, that's, it's not just that. It's, that's just an idea of what that competency covers. And there may be other things that fall within that competency that they have a comment on, that they can comment on.
And then, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I just, I, I, as far as Sunny's, I agree with the, the self-evaluation because I think it helps us sort of see where Scott's at versus, you know, what. And so where there's similarities and I think it opens room for discussion and then maybe allowing for more discussion to where there are some of those, you know, I think. When I've done evaluations, you know, a solid hour, you know, to go over some of that stuff and there was lots of. Questions and stuff, so I mean, just allowing for reasonable ample time to be beneficial for the group.
Okay. What did you guys think about receiving the results and then having it discussed there? Because I know when we had our meeting with Greg Van Dell, he was, he was kind of saying, oh, your plan was to bring, as for the board self eval, but the same would go for both. I had the results and it was, let's look at it and then think about it and discuss it, I mean, that's.
I think it would be helpful if we could review it prior to the meeting. So that we don't have to be sitting there and reading and trying to figure out, make sense of what the responses are and then try to in our head think, okay. Where do I see some differences and what should we be talking about, it would be nice to be able to kind of go through that process. On our own and not have to spend that time during the meeting.
The, the concern, I think, with the, and Lisa, you'd be able, or Lisa and Scott would be able to help me a little bit remembering this with MSBA, I don't know if they spoke about that explicitly. The piece, the one piece is data privacy, would, would that be, or just handling the data?
Well, I think we're, we're all held to a standard of keeping private data private.
Right.
So that's on us as board members to make sure that we're not.
That, yeah.
Inappropriately sharing private data.
Right.
I think it makes the conversation much more productive.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Okay.
And I would say if we're going to do that, that, you know, you come in and get a paper copy, you know?
Yep.
It's not something that's.
Right, emailed or obviously, right.
Yeah, with the, with the expectation that then when we have the meeting and the discussion, we bring that paper copy in and we can hand it back in that night.
There were some questions too that I received about. Using Survey Monkey and starting a survey and can you come back and finish it? And I know that I could do a better job of clarifying that because I don't think that that's possible. So you have to kind of have allotted time. To sit down and start it and finish it, so that's.
I wonder if it's possible in the next.
Update?
In the, um, so we have what, like the gen- or the second level that you pay for, I wonder if the next level up. Provides that and I have no idea what the cost for that is, but.
Probably have to create it like a login or something, but something to think about or look in, look into. But were there any other process related, and this will go back to subcommittee. But any other process related questions? Okay. So yes, this will get referred back to subcommittee and I'm assuming that if there's any. Any, I'm sure this will come back as a topic. To, to fill you guys in in the final. Recommended changes. All right, discussion item C, so.
I just have one more question, so since the, the timeline, so are we, is part of Scott's thing the, the goals and the? Because we've already sort of passed that first July meeting, so I just didn't know. Where we were with that, I just. Because we're already sort of.
Right, so at first meeting in July, we were supposed to review the job description, evaluation process, forms, indicators and timelines, so we're kind of doing that now, except not the job description.
Right.
Not the forms.
Yeah, the piece, the goals and that was part of. So the one piece that we haven't included as a topic was, were the job description and the goals and so. Um, I know that we had talked about having the goals at. This meeting?
You can get to report them.
Oh, share it with us, okay.
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 Perfect.
I just, because I'm saying that that's past us, so I just didn't know where that fell into.
Where, where?
Technically, it's saying first meeting in July and we usually only have one meeting in July.
One meeting in July, oh, so that should be another point to make, first meeting in July. Well, I suppose it's still first meeting or so, it's still, still appropriate, yeah, it's still appropriate. And part of the delay also is the subcommittee finishing our process.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, so then everything kind of rolled back a meeting and then. A meeting or two, I can't remember exactly, but hopefully this will be the last time that we're off schedule.
Anytime you make changes, sometimes it's hard to.
To make the changes and.
The changes and get on.
The timeline.
The timeline right away.
The, um, yeah, okay. The one piece that I, and I noticed that today as well, the job description piece, I hadn't have that on my to-do list to add to a agenda, so is that something, obviously it's part of this process. But that's something Scott, I guess we'll have to talk about putting that as a discussion item and I don't see it being a super lengthy discussion, but we'll have to include that as. And maybe that could be a good thing to bring back when we, the subcommittee comes back and does their summary. Okay. But I'll put, I'll take that as an action to make sure that gets. On our, on our future agendas. All right. The final discussion item is school placement appeals. Our subcommittee met last Thursday and we heard appeals from eight families, I believe.
Who's that one in subcommittee?
You and us, and then Scott, yeah, they were the three board members and then Scott and then the other. Yep, so then the other members that were present were the three elementary principals and then.
Parents.
Parents.
So we, and, okay, I just have one more question, so do you do that each, each parent appeal you do individually?
Yeah, okay.
They were not all the same grade.
Majority were first graders coming from kindergarten.
Well, and I know we had, we had all gotten some of the appeals and so.
You knew.
Being new to all of this, I kind of was like, should I be replying, I'm not going to reply because I'm not on that committee, but then I kind of felt like, are they expecting some sort of response?
And I, um, I did reply to one that I, it seemed appropriate to apply to, reply to, one of them I let go through committee process. And then another one Scott replied to. So.
Okay, Scott replied to one that we got information on, if we're thinking about the same one, but that. The family had decided to already take their child out of the Rockville district. Um, and then they were just responding to a letter that they got after they had already made a decision, so that didn't even come to the appeals, but. I think we all got a copy of that and it's an open enrolled family, so.
But so the, so, so that's the right way, for the board members that are not part of that appeal process, we should just leave those, we don't need to respond to them individually?
I typically just say thank you so much for reaching out, you know, Mr. Staska will typically be the one that would respond to this, yeah. I just thank them, so at least it looks like I've seen it, responded.
Yeah.
It's good to get some clarity because beyond even just this, I mean, we might get comments from, concerns from people that send it to the board and just.
And so you just never know how you should.
And I don't reply all on that, obviously, because it's not me.
Right.
But I feel like, you know, as a representative, they want to hear from you, but yet.
Right. Right. Right, right. I think that's actually, I'm going to mark that, I think that's a really good question, or I think that's a good topic for us to have as far as. And it's, maybe it's a good conversation as part of our board self eval, but really making sure that we're all on the same page of expectations for each other or expectations of communication.
And is there any guidelines from MSBA on responding to email communication from parents when it's sent to the whole board?
Right.
I don't want to get in trouble for.
Right.
Responding or reply to all type and then all of a sudden becomes.
Right, okay, MSBA, okay, perfect.
And, and maybe we decide as a board, when we get, when we get communications. As a full board, that the standard response would be, you know, to thank them for the communication and that it would be addressed by whatever committee is. Responsible for whatever the topic is.
Or the board chair or the.
Yeah.
Well, Scott's the official spokesperson for the board and then next would be the board chair, depending on where it lays out, so that's kind of the guideline that I typically respond, not just because I'm on the committee. I'll just try to send out an email, I don't get them all, definitely don't get them all, but I'll try to send out an email, thank you so much for reaching out.
Scott will contact you.
Mr. Staska will, right, respond or I appreciate your information or non-committal, very non-committal.
Yeah.
Most of that comes from policy two five. That says media communications are directed by way. And then last line says the board will appoint one official spokesperson, which we did at the joint meeting and preferably the chair.
How about that?
But that's more media, which is not the same, you know, I think, I think it's just a good discussion for us to have on a clear understanding of how we want as a board to have a uniform voice.
So what I'm hearing you say, Lisa, and I think everybody likes to at least be acknowledged that you got it.
Right.
Because I got your information, I'm going to channel it the most appropriate way I can.
Right.
You know, and Mr. Staska will be in touch or whatever.
And I, I seriously don't even respond to the issue on it because I don't, I don't want to take that step, I just thank them. And partly because I had been contacted in person then by a couple of people that said, you know, and I emailed you along with the board, you didn't even say anything and so. I get that too, because otherwise it looks like a non-response.
Yeah, and I felt uncomfortable not replying, but I didn't know what.
I knew what I was, I was going to be, and these particular ones, I, you know, and, and I don't, I know you have a list of things that you want to talk about and so I'm going to let you go because.
Yes, I do.
I, I definitely am going to vent on this, but I will let you, you know.
That is great restraint, I'm really impressed by that, that is impressive. But going back to the policy that Scott mentioned, even though that is media, that's kind of what I base that out of, so. Anybody else want to do more intro on our school placement appeals update?
No, go for it, I, well, I'll, like I said, I will add conversation to, about regarding just communication processes, board processes, so I think that's a good conversation, but.
So. So we, we met on Thursday and I've been a part of the appeals committee, I believe, for almost my entire tenure on the board. And it is never pleasant because it's difficult, people are talking about their kids and I look at it from the parent perspective. Historically, we've always, always been able to accommodate those without throwing the class sizes across the district. Difficult, and you got to remember, it's just elementary, we're not talking about middle school or high school. Um, and so we came into this one with more and a huge concentration on one grade, which made it more difficult, you did see those emails. The process itself, I think no matter what, when we have fresh eyes, whether it's board members, administrators, I think it's good to have fresh eyes to always step back and look and say, you know, could we make this better? Could we change this, could we do it different? Basically, it comes down to, you know, our policy that lists our class sizes and then from there, we do have that twenty percent window that we can use, that we can go above policy. If it's financial constraints and basically if, the way I look at it is if we can't afford to place another teacher, that is a financial constraint, you know, is how I rationalize that. It was, our families were, for the most part respectful and expressed themselves, we did have a little bit of kind of an antagonistic. Issue and a little bit, which I get because it's their kid, but just really trying to step back and look how we could make the best decision. We ended up, there were two kindergartners and six first graders, we ended up granting all of those. And it was, it was the right decision to make, but yet it is going to put us in a very difficult position over the next couple of years. Both on the Cold Spring Elementary position, but especially on our Rockville and Richmond sites because they are very low and I don't, I didn't, I gave everything else, so Scott, I'll refer back to you as far as what those class sizes will end up. Because I, I didn't.
Well, sixteen, it's sixteen in first grade.
It's low. It is really low for those and so that puts us in, we were trying to equalize because we're one district, you know? And so that puts us in a position that, yes, it'll be okay this year, but we are going to be facing that unless our enrollment really changes, so we didn't, we band-aided. But we didn't solve this year and so that's something to keep in mind.
So low in Richmond and Rockville, but where does it put our Cold Spring Elementary?
High, and the thing is after.
What's our policy?
Twenty percent potential over rich in financial.
That is the same, just, that is the same as what it was last year, just for a point of reference.
But the, the bigger concern is the low because they're so unequal.
There's an equity issue.
But we didn't fix it last year and this is where my problem is, is last year we made the decision to allow that many kids in kindergarten here. If we wanted to fix it, they shouldn't have been allowed to be in kindergarten here, they should have went to Richmond to start.
Right, and then they would have been.
And we didn't do it and, and that's why I was extremely frustrated that, again, if we have clear boundaries with grayer areas, so when families make a decision where they're going to live and when they're going to have a kid. They know this could happen to them and then we have to make sure we fix it right away and I think, you know, like Lisa's saying. You know, I don't know if it's quite as doomed maybe and again, I haven't been through it, so I don't know. But the kindergartners that we left in Cold Spring Elementary, it wasn't, we were going to take kids that we allowed to go to Cold Spring Elementary and, and displace them. They will fall in line with Cold Spring Elementary as long as we don't allow an open enrollee in at that age level. It'll be Richmond and I, I think Rockville is actually a little bit better, I don't remember the numbers, but they were, it was more in line, it was the one. The kindergarten class from last year at Richmond is the one that is, is low. The, the problem was is that I think there was a lot of time wasted at the administration level to try to figure out who they're going to execute here. And within three minutes, we made the decision that we can't do this. And I'm just, to me, I'm like, seriously, how, how could four, three people, four people that are the professionals not figure out that, you know what? We made the mistake last year, we can't put these families through that because we drug those people in here, they're emotionally upset for three, four, five days, their kids are drawn through this. And nobody even fought to do it, I, I was waiting for a fight, I, I wanted somebody in the room to say, we can't do this. Because we put ourselves through this process and it made, it was embarrassing, I was embarrassed to be there and have to put those people through that. And I saw one last night in the community and, and. And I saw one last night in the community and, and it was unfortunate that we couldn't have figured that out without having to have us three in there to say, well, we're still within the policy. Why, why don't we, you know, this isn't the way we want it to be. And Lisa is right, it is, it is a Band-Aid, but we now have to figure out how we're gonna fix it from the beginning. Because it was, I don't know, less than five minutes where we basically said, we're gonna grant all these appeals. I was expecting more of, you know, because the principal said, well, yeah, no problem, we can do it, yeah, no problem. I'm like, wha, wha, why did we do this? Why would we do that? And I just, it, we're in the business of taking care of families and kids. And we should be better when we have two kids living three blocks away from a school in Richmond. We should be able to figure that one out. And within 30 seconds, Mary's, oh, yeah, yeah, no problem. Anyway, I think politics are involved. That frustrates me. Because I think that whatever is going on, I don't know. Because again, we looked at the numbers and we said, well, we're, we're still within the policy and you guys could have made this decision without us even going through this. And the recommendation could have been, it isn't perfect, but reasonable in common sense. And like Lisa said, is it the best decision? No, but it was the right decision.
But we also did have parents that contacted me that were upset that we were gonna leave it at that high a level in Cold Spring. They're not happy that they're at 20...
And, and...
For first grade?
For first grade.
Right, but they would be, they're all sent a letter...
I mean, I get what Lynn's saying because there, you, we do have to be aware that the decisions that we make related to appeals, if we're gonna go over our policy, could create ill will from all of the other families outside of those...
That were asked to...
That were asked to move. But I, I agree with you that we need to be looking at it from the start. So, had we addressed it at the kindergarten level and, and put some of these, placed some of these students in different schools right away at kindergarten, then they wouldn't have been going, it wouldn't have resulted in kindergarten URCSE. And now, we're asking you in first grade to go to a different school.
Just so you understand, we allowed a student to go from St. Augusta and open in, well, we let them, place them in Cold Spring Elementary last year. That was in kindergarten. And then, we are now gonna take, maybe go back to John Clark. Common sense would have said...
We should have placed him in John Clark.
Yes, you are not gonna drive by a school to get to a school. So, I, I don't...
Why was it, why'd that happen, or...
Parent request.
It's a parent employment, it made sense to come this direction.
But I, I don't buy that we, that, you know, we, we could have done a better job last year and the year before, and the year before. And, and maybe I'm being too tough on the people involved, maybe I'm expecting too much, but they can do a better job. Because they, they spent many hours going over that list of who they're gonna kick out versus trying to figure out, how do we do a better job of eliminating this problem? And that means when they come into kindergarten, having better district lines, talking to these people, finding out, making them understand, if you're gonna live out in a certain area that's outside of, or very close to our boundary, this could happen to you. This has been going on for 30 years. We heard people that were sitting in the room that had a kid that said, this happened to me. I had to go from second grade to third grade. I had, I mean, someone, let's, let's fix it. I mean, I, I just, I, it, it was not okay. It was a public relations nightmare. If there's a parent out there that says that they don't want to, you know, that they're afraid of the boundary, the policy's in the policy. It says we can go to 22. So, when they signed their kid up to go to Cold Spring, they agreed to that. So, I don't buy that either, because we're not going over the policy. Right is right. And what we did the other night was right, what we put these people through was wrong. And, and it's, I don't want to be part of this if that's the way we're gonna do things. Because I think that there's politics involved and I think it wasn't well thought out. I think it's, I can't believe we've been doing this for all these years. I can't believe that that's how we've been doing it. So, that's, that's my opinion. That's why I wanted you to go first.
No, I think if we all bring our own opinions to this and like Shannon, your experience, if you hadn't been sitting at the table, you'd have a totally different viewpoint of, you know, you'd listen to it, but you experienced it. I think we do need to look at the, the way that we do it, but I don't agree that it is completely wrong. I think it's difficult, but we're a district that has to be equalized all the way across. And that has been the case. There have been years that Richmond is sitting with over 30 kids. And so, what do we say then, I'm sorry, you can't stay there even though it's within your boundary? We have to move those kids because at some point, we are gonna pass even that 20% top. Do we need to look at the policy and change our class size? Maybe.
My question is, how does that happen? It's impossible. If, if you have a kindergarten class that's there, if a new kid moves into our district, they don't have an option. So, I don't know how you can have this same amount of stress on people because we should never have to move a kid from a school to another school.
In the middle of...
In the middle of, of middle of the year, as long as we do it right from the beginning.
Right.
Because I, I don't know how that would happen. It, it seems impossible to me.
So hypothetically, if there's, you know, we're at class size policy for third grade in Richmond and a family moves in with twins in third grade and put them at 29, even though you live in Richmond, we're, we're like locked in that building with size. So, to me, I mean, again, this is process, that's not my job. But it would make sense that you'd say, you know, when they, when they come on to fill out the paperwork, there's no room. I mean, that's, you're not gonna be upset about that as a parent, maybe disappointed, but it would be clear.
They have a choice where they want to live.
But they're not starting at Richmond where all of a sudden they're saying, oh, no, this is too big.
Because just so you guys know, what I went in, I thought going in this meeting, I thought, well, we're not gonna be able to grant any of these. I mean, I went into it, I, I told you guys, I was definitely scared. I felt so bad that this had to happen, but I thought it had to happen. So, I had no idea that we had wiggle room. I thought we were gonna go in there and I was gonna have to, this is the way it is. But then, to find out that we did all of that for no reason and within one minute, we made it all okay, that, that part was hard. And that's why I think we can change the process and I can get over what happened. But I don't know that it could ever happen that a second or a third grade can get out of whack if you start it right. Because when they move to this district, they have to, they, they sign up for our district. You just said it earlier, Lisa, they are in our district. So, that means when they show up at Richmond, they say, here's the deal. This class is full, you're gonna have, we're gonna have to have a meet at the district and figure out what we can do. There may be some movement because kids leave or move, but at this point in time, it's not gonna work for you to be able to have your kid go to school here. I don't know how often that happens. I'm guessing, I mean, I mean, I would think not that often. I mean, Lily's been around for 35 years, so you were all those people that I talked about.
Okay, just a couple of clarifications. Even though we made the final decision within about a 10-minute period of time, the work that went into it needed to show us where we were. And so, I don't feel like it was wasted time by our administrators at all. Because they needed to look at their sizes. Our goal was to equalize. They needed to walk through that. So, it was a decision that was finally made, but we had started working on the process, both from the administrators and then as board members, as we kind of heard and walked through it. There was one medical one that made more sense to not move the student outside of Cold Spring Elementary because of the support that's available at CSE. That one made sense. And so, you know, I mean, you go through them and there are different reasons. If you have somebody move into the district, they don't usually move in, maybe with just one kid, they might move in with more. You don't want to split families, there's all of those things. I agree, it is a, definitely a difficult thing that we do. Can we make it better? Yes, but I don't feel that it was a complete waste of everybody's time. It was frustrating and I get that, but I, I don't know.
At the back, okay, one other student was, lived in St. Nick and we allowed her to go to Cold Spring last year. But now, this year, we're gonna tell her she had to go to Richmond. Okay? That's two of them that last year. We had another family that's Spanish speaking that lives in town, that struggle, I mean, it's a struggle to just, you know, to embrace the language. And we're gonna make them take their kid from Cold Spring Elementary, they live here in town, send rock. I, I, there, there could have been work done behind the scenes to not put these families through it. Did they have to go through the exercise maybe to figure out where they're at? Yes. Did they, did we need to go to this point? No, we did not. Because they, they get paid a lot of money to figure that out and they could have went to that point. I had no idea, when, when those emails talked about going over policy, I had no idea. And again, shame on me for not knowing that there was a, a rumor there that we could make some of these situations okay. Were there a couple of those that maybe we could have said, you know what? You know, the one that lives in Rockville, I think we all would have said, you know, that you probably need to stay in Rockville. However, like Lisa said in the meeting, if, if we're gonna go this direction with all these kids, it's pretty hard to alienate one. And that's the reason why we didn't do that. Had we done a better job of that list and not, you know, and just got, went after the ones that made sense and not did it last year, I, anyway, I, I'm not gonna defend, I just, I think defending what we did is not, we, we need to fix it. We need to fix it and we need to make it better.
But do we have balanced class sizes in kindergarten last year?
Well...
We did.
So, if they were balanced last year...
We went to three sections in first grade because the numbers go up.
So, they were all 16 last year, across, pretty much across the board.
So, we knew this was coming last year.
And then...
Because the kindergarten class size is a range of 17 to 20. But we knew when we added the addition to kindergarten teacher a year ago that we were going below class size at 16.
So, it was balanced across the district.
It was balanced across the district and then at...